Called to order this special meeting of the committee for Monday, March 11th, 15. Just to clarify as we get started here, kind of the purpose and intent of tonight's meeting. I think that the last month or months or so, we've had a lot of discussions about the budget. We've given Matt and Mike a lot of feedback and asked them to look into several different things. So tonight is really an opportunity for them to share with us what they've come back with, give us an idea of what we've been asking for, to have a little discussion. There was no intention for us to come to a number tonight, to make a vote tonight, but really so we have this information to sit on for the next week, Monday at our regular school committee meeting, we will discuss it in depth and then hopefully come to some kind of an agreement to have a vote on what we want the budget to look like. All right? Just want to make sure we were clear on what the intention was for tonight, just to listen and ask questions and then we'll have a week to kind of ruminate on this stuff and make good decisions next Monday. So you might hand it over to you.
Hand it over to me, I'll get started. Nice to everybody here, thank you. If you look back on January 8th and 10th, we had our administration and our team meet with special budget meetings with school committee. At that time, we were looking for a total budget increase of 3.8%, assuming chapter 70 increase of 2.3% and the town share increase of 5.2%. The biggest change from what we know at original special budget meetings in January is that the state has increased our chapter 70 funds by $1.2 million or 11.6% instead of the 2.3. So DESI has recognized that we are one of the few districts that's actually increasing its enrollments, which is exciting for us. It's been one of our tasks since my team came on a couple of years ago. And then our student population also needs assistance coming out of the pandemic, there's no question. This draft presented budget here is asking for the town to now increase its share by 3%, not including indirect costs. So as a result, this new budget proposal is a total increase of 7.7% that we are sharing with you mainly due to the DESI increase that we had. Since January, we did have a special meeting with the town manager and her team where we discussed different options in the financial state of the town as well. So here we are tonight, Matt and I will get started. Please stop and ask questions whenever you have them, I'm happy to. And we can go into further detail on some things if needed or less detail. Some of this is a repeat of information that you've already seen, but we're happy to explain any questions, okay? Matt, we're ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so just as a recap, this was the original budget that we presented you guys, January 8th. It was a 3.8% increase. At that time, there was still some unknowns like we said, so there was, we didn't know the chapter 70 money. We still have the outstanding transportation contract. There was still some tuitions like Norfolk Aggie that was still outstanding at the time, so there was some unknowns at this time of 3.8. Again, here's a great fun summary for the budget for next year. We still have an unknown with the Title Grants, but there's been some correspondence with, you know, the state of a Title I. I do think we're going to get, see an increase, a decrease, I'm sorry, in Title I. We don't know how much, so I just haven't level budgeted, but I do think we're going to have a decrease in Title I grant. Again, this is just a repeat, this is a snapshot of our revolving fund balances. So in the proposed budget, we have a position out of ACE and a position out of school choice.
The dean of students is coming out of school choice, so we did build that in. We wanted to show, you know, using some of our revolving funds as best we can. And the PE teacher is the PE teacher that allows us to have mindfulness in both Chapey and Barton, which is our Tier Two SEL program, is coming out of the ACE revolving account.
Where's that PE at?
PE at Chapey and Barton, she's split, she teaches at both buildings and that allows either two staff members to do mindfulness full-time in those buildings and Tier Two support our social emotional kids, which has worked out really well for us. And then school lunch is, you know, there's a lot there in school lunch, but that can only be used, just to clarify, on staffing for food services and equipment. The past years, we've kind of used that money. We had new tables at Chapey and dishwashers in each building as well, so we get rid of the styrofoam tray, so. But that is just a reminder for everybody, that can only be used in food services, not teaching positions or anything else. So go ahead, Matt. Our enrollment by schools, as we said earlier, has been increasing, which is terrific. A little bit on this chart is because of the movement of 5th grade to Barton and 8th grade from the high school to middle school, but otherwise, our enrollments district-wide overall are on the increase, which is great, that's what we want. Want our kid, families sending their kids to Oxford schools and staying here. So this bottom line has our school year that we're currently in. As we've talked about previously with school committee, pre-K enrollment continues to increase. Our early K numbers for kindergarten look very strong. We're expecting somewhere between 100 and 110 kids for K again. And we're at 1493 for now in the DESI rolls for our count for enrollment.
Yeah, one thing to note, so if you go and look at the foundation enrollment that's listed for DESI, so this is, this is basically a snapshot at October 1st of kids that are actually in our schools. The foundation enrollment includes all kids that are tuitioned out as well, so if you like special ed tuition, so, and whatever other like tuitions that we're financially responsible for. So it's whatever where we're financially responsible for is included in the foundation enrollment. The foundation enrollment is kind of a complex formula too.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I was saying to myself, I saw the discrepancy in what was presented before at school committee, and I'm saying to myself, wait a second, where are those extra kids coming from?
Because that original number, right, the original, on January, we didn't have the foundation enrollment number yet, so I was estimating it, but it went from, I think I had it listed at like 1526, which was last year's number, so I figured it was constant, but it went up to 1569. It's a pretty elaborate formula. It's in like pre-K kids are counted as half.
I saw a lot, yeah.
And then, it's in our building, yeah, so 1493.
Can you say again, Matt, what's that number also includes? Out of district placements, school choice out, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so whoever the district is financially responsible for, so some of the charter kids, yeah.
Okay.
And I got you, I got a description for DESI of how it's calculated. It's like, it's like five pages long.
Yeah, yeah, I went through it and then he's like, oh, can't fall asleep.
True.
Yeah. Yeah, so like the most basic thing is whoever the district is financially responsible for, goes into the foundation enrollment. And then this was given last time, just the district PE, it was current as of January, but it's pretty similar to the old one. And then out of district students, again, this is something that we had to keep on looking at, and I said this last meeting, but if you look at sped out of district, 22 and 23, it went up three, then it went up seven for 23 and 24. If we see an increase like that again, you know, we're, it's something that we really have to watch, because I mean, this is special education, out of district tuition that are over 100,000, so I mean, if we have an dollar increase of five or six, we're talking pretty big money.
And it's good that charter and homeschool are coming down, coming back, and we obviously want to try to keep our families in Oxford, continually working on that choice outnumber, which has dropped significantly in the past four years, but we've got to keep working on that for our families here, so we will continue to do that.
All right, this slide is like this little budget history. You can see it's over the last five years. It has the chapter 70 state aid numbers, the town share, not including indirect costs. So you can see over the past, well, it's actually over the past six years, the chapter 70 state aid has only increased on average 0.8%. The town share over those same, over that same time period has increased 5.7%. And the overall budget, which would be the overall general fund budget, has increased 2.8% over those six years. All right, now this net school spending is basically, the net school spending, as you all know, is the requirement from the state of how much we have to spend each year. So Oxford is spending about 9.9% more than the requirement from the state, which is ranked 271 out of the 318 districts in the state.
So that means Oxford is spending...
About 9.9% more than they need to, above and beyond the required net school spending with the state. And then I have some rankings here of some...
That puts us in 271st out of what, 318?
318.
18 schools?
We're around.
Yeah.
You can see the towns were around right there. Right around us.
Do you see some town?
No, it's just, so by that Sutton's 40, almost 45% above what they need to be, what they're required to also.
Right.
Yeah, so Sutton's spending, like so say, just to make round numbers, their required net school spending is 10 million, they're spending probably 14. I mean, it's bigger numbers than that, but just to make it, make it round, yeah.
So, in regards to net school spending, I know we talked about this, and maybe, maybe I'll save my question, so you can keep going, but I have a question about net school spending afterwards.
Are you ready?
Yeah, okay, Ron.
All right, so now I have my...
You need to hurry.
I have to find...
Or do you mean you're referring to a later slide?
No, I just wrote my questions.
Oh, okay.
All right, so it's the required minimum that we have to spend on education, right?
Correct.
And it includes our chapter 70, it includes our local contributions, it's our operating expenditures, which is like whatever we have, school portion of shared municipal costs.
Minus transportation.
Minus transportation.
Yeah, which is about 1.8 million.
It excludes non-appropriated grants, but does it include appropriated grants?
It's just general fund.
Okay. Because I was trying to understand like the language of them saying, non-appropriated grants. They made like this big point that it excludes that, but I'm saying, well, what would the opposite be? It would be appropriated grants, grants that we already know that we're going to be spending. So...
Yeah, grant money's not included.
It's not included, no matter what.
Not no matter what, yeah.
Okay. So I was just trying to, you know, if you look at kind of how we're a little bit above, I didn't know, like the town's obviously helping us with certain pieces, but also there's things to, I guess, and we can come back to it, but our shared service agreements and things like that, I don't know if they have increased over time, and if they've increased over time, and it looks like we're spending more towards our schools and the operation of our schools, but towards our students or pupil.
No, and if you look at, I mean, we'll get to it at the end, but that last slide, it's the indirect, I think it's like slide 27.
Yeah, I want that.
The indirect costs have been pretty consistent. I mean, it's been fluctuated a few hundred thousand, but it's gone up a little, but then down a little, up a little. So it's been pretty consistent for what the actual indirect costs have been over the years.
Can you give an example of an indirect cost?
So it would be like healthcare, because the town pays for, town pays for our healthcare.
Okay.
So that's one. Facilities, because we, we have an agreement with the facilities, our DPW, so they pick up a lot of our facilities costs, like maintenance costs, like certain things, if they have to fix it, they cover the cost of it.
So it's direct, is that money that goes, cost per pupil goes to...
I think it goes towards net school spending.
It goes towards net school spending.
So it looks like our net school spending might be higher, per se.
Yeah, right, okay, yeah.
But it's going towards things like insurance.
Yeah.
And maintenance and things like that. And I guess what always kind of resonates with me and kind of I mull upon is, we're one department of many departments, right? And I wonder, do other departments in this town get assessed for certain things that we get assessed for? Like, do they get a, I know we're a lot larger, don't get me wrong, but do they get assessed for maintenance on their buildings? Is that part of their, like, what is their agreement with the town for that? What percentage? Do they get assessed for, I know we got assessed at one point for electricity and streetlights?
Yeah.
Like literally the lights in front of the building. Okay, so that makes us look like we have a higher net school spending, but in reality, it's because we're paying for lights on the street. We're not paying for like people in the classroom that are impacting education. So when I keep reflecting upon these things, I'm like, well, I'd love to know like our percentage that's being kind of taken and looking like it's going above and beyond compared to other departments, how's that working out? And we used to have agreements, and I haven't seen the agreements for a long time, and I know you said they're pretty consistent, like we haven't had a lot of changes, but if there's been any changes, that should have been something that was discussed with the committee to agree upon in like an MOA before they took place.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Okay. Anything else on net school spending?
I think, I think we spoke about it at the last meeting too, because it's kind of discouraging for us that we are so far, so low compared to many of the towns in the state, how much they spend above the net school spending. And I think I made the point at our last meeting, I understand why I use these towns, but we also have the DART tool on the DESI website that gives us what they consider considerable cohorts, and we are at the bottom of that cohort also.
Matt, do you know like approximately what percentage of our net school spending is those, you know, shared municipal costs?
Well, it's, say 5.5 million out of just under 24. So would that be like 20%? A little, a little bit over, a little bit under 20%?
So if we think...
Oh, no, a little bit over 20%.
So if we think about that, right, net school spending, but 20% of it is going to those other services.
And we're not, then we're 10% below.
Then we're below.
Yeah.
And that's significantly below what everybody else is. So I guess my point is, we might need to like look at this, and I, I guess I would want to look at too, like what are other towns doing, what are best practices throughout the Commonwealth? What's happening with other departments? Again, not just Oxford, but like throughout the Commonwealth, do other people get assessed in the, in communities? Because like, I know we only have a small piece of the pie to be sharing, but like back in the day, we used to get all the other money, which was only about a million or so dollars, which is nothing close to 5.5 million that we're paying for these indirect costs. So that's like a huge hit on our budget, and it's, and this is part of the reason, I think, why we have this like inability to appropriately staff our buildings.
And I'm sorry, did we say this includes indirect costs?
Yeah, I got you, yeah, yeah.
So it looks like...
20% of those indirect costs.
So it looks like we're a little bit above net school spending, but in reality, if we think of it, if it's approximately 20%, I guess I'd want to know, what are other municipalities' school departments paying? Are they paying about 20% too for their indirect costs?
Well, it would, it would...
Would it be tons different?
It would depend, because a lot of, a lot of school departments have their own facilities department.
Right.
So that would cut that portion right out.
Right.
And a lot of school departments pay for health insurance.
Yeah.
Right inside the school department, which we don't. So it's really a tough number to get apples to apples, because there'd be certain stuff that's paid more by school departments that the town's paying for us, then there could be other stuff, you know?
So I guess, I wonder, and this again, it's just food for thought, why don't we take back that 20% and manage that ourselves? Could we do it more financially soundly? I mean, I know we're so lean, right, because we keep cutting our staff immensely, like you are running the whole budget department. And back in the day, before you, it was Justin who was running the budget and he was running the facilities. And for one man to do, and there were some other people that kind of helped a little bit, but I think that's why it became almost palatable for the superintendents to be like, when the town manager said, oh, look, I could, I could get you more resources if I took a piece of your pie and I put it towards my pie, and then I could expand the DPW, and the DPW could also just take on this role. But therefore, when we're doing that, we're actually like floating the DPW's budget in essence. And it's not, I'm not saying that's, that's not a good thing, that we're all kind of working together, but like we're helping them in some aspects, create a department and run a department that if they didn't have the funds and we managed it all ourselves, they wouldn't have that ability to do what they've done. I don't know.
I mean, I, I agree with some of what Pal is saying, but I also, I'm not sure if it'd be 100% clear, because yes, does the town help with the fields, does the town help, do they snowplow? Yes, but that's not five, that's not 20% of the budget.
Right.
I think the biggest indirect cost, and correct me if I'm wrong, is health insurance.
Health insurance.
Which is all ours, it's something, it is what it is.
Right. So I just, again, I agree with your point to some degree about, but I don't think the costs equal 20%.
I guess we can break it down to like...
We could, but I mean, health insurance, my guess would be like 75% of it, probably.
Well, yeah, so like health insurance plus retirees, so that's like almost 3 million of a five, and then like Medicare tax and stuff, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to say it's like, stuff that's hard numbers is over 4 million of it.
Yeah, so four out of the five.
Yeah.
So it's hard, that's why I'm saying, those other, could you shave off a million? Potentially maybe, but I just wanted to be clear that it's, some of that's just out of our control.
Yeah.
So about 5% though?
Yeah, I guess, I'll just say 5%.
Is about, like one-fourth, would be for maintenance, right?
Maybe, but I don't know.
And I, I know this is just like ballpark, but...
I don't know, maybe like 750,000 would be like somewhat discretionary, if you want to call it that.
Are we good, good on this slide?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one, Matt? All right, so that leaves us where we are tonight with what, now that we have our new state numbers appropriations, the state aid increase will up 0.6%. We're asking the town share, not including indirect costs, for 3%. Give us a total general fund percent change for tonight's proposal discussion at 7.7%. And as we always say, this is the school committee's purview to do what we want going forward, but this is what the information that Matt and I have coming out of conversations and school committee meetings and subcommittee meetings, that we tried to address a lot of our concerns as a school district, from, from us as a group and our administrative team as well. So we'll go, we'll go through those, please let us know, we can stop at any time.
Yeah, well, one thing I want to mention too, is this, like, so is we're seeing the state aid of 12.2 million. We actually, it kind of came up in, when we were meeting with the town at their budget meeting, that this number could go down. We contacted DESI and made sure that this is, you know, for the...
It's not a one-year bump.
It's not a one-year bump, it's...
When you say this number could go down, their, their argument, this number could go down next year.
Yeah, right, chapter 70. Yeah, we contacted DESI and, you know, this is going to be, you know, what our, if our enrollment, you know, drops by, you know, a bunch of people, like a bunch of kids, it could go down, but it's, it'd be, it'd be constant for a few years because we're a two-year bump.
There's a health harmless area.
Oh, exactly, yeah, right.
So that's a good thing.
Yeah, so there's really no way that this could drop down to 11, whatever we were at last year.
Right, there's 211 districts in the state that are being, you're being hold harmless, they're called.
Yeah, hold harmless, right.
And you're getting no money.
Right.
No money, so...
We're one of the few getting money, because we're also getting, because our enrollment's going up and our kids need it, need the support. They've recognized that, and they also recognize we're coming off ESR. They understand that, we need to keep some of those supports for our kids. So this, this is some of the changes and stuff we've looked at since we now have our new numbers. Matt's been working on a contract with the busing companies, that's going to be projected at about 37 higher than we thought. We have a student that's a finalist at Norfolk Aggie to go there, we have one coming off the books, we have another potential student going there that we have to budget for now. The next three things on that list, the tech integrationist, the middle school interventionist, and the bright room teacher. We have three outstanding employees doing a great job impacting our kids. And originally, we didn't think we would have, be able to fill those ESR positions we've had for the last two years, but we now believe in this budget, we can keep those three staff members, they've done a great job. We've been fortunate to find really good people to impact our kids. The math department at the high school is in need of a math curriculum. They are, they are, we started with three or four that they looked at, we're now down to SABSS and illustrative math. We've had a lot of good discussions with them, and that's something that we need to consider. SABSS is our K through eight math curriculum, so it would go in line with that, we need it for Algebra I, geometry and Algebra II. That, that is really a critical need for our high school, so we're going to work with them the rest of the spring on that, to figure that out. Obviously, if that's what we decide to do, we would come before the data accountability committee first for a presentation on that, and it needs the vote of that subcommittee forward, but I just want everybody aware of that. Kindergarten Chromebooks, there are best practice Chromebooks that have touchscreens for the kids, touchscreen and iPads, the kids can do your data reports and everything right in the touchscreen, which would free up 100 Chromebooks to go to other kids in the district. I know that was a discussion at Dave at previous budget subcommittee meetings that we talked about the need to have Chromebooks built in, that we are a one-to-one school district, we can't just wait four years and have a huge budget item, and that would help with that a lot as well. Not only meet the needs of our kindergarten kids as learners, but also help spread those new Chromebooks out throughout the district. We built in some general fund, special ed funding, we will talk about circuit breaker and some of Matt and I's concerns with that, we want to make sure we have enough for our out of district placements. School districts across the state are seeing out of district placements on the rise since the pandemic, and students needing to go to special schools with special instructions. So we don't expect that to settle down anytime soon, we want to make sure we have a responsible budget. We, we're looking for a reading teacher at the middle school, it's a best practice to have reading teachers in the middle schools. We have for our seventh and eighth graders, a Spanish teacher who's split, but this would allow us some of our kids who aren't quite ready for Spanish. We talked about this at multiple meetings about having a reading specialist. Ms. Joseph is our new middle school teacher, our principal, she believes it's best practice. And that really could impact some of our kids at that middle school level, that's come up in a lot of discussions. The additional technology, we always need money for white, for the smart boards and Chromebooks to have enough on reserve for our kids. And that kind of, those are expenditures that, that have been increased through our chapter 70 funds. So and I'll go through those as we go through each school. So the first thing on the, on the list that's new is instructional coaches. This is a best practice, Worcester has done this for years, it's seen a lot of growth as are many of my peers, school districts. It's an opportunity to really support our teachers. Teachers, teaching has never been more challenging than it is now. We want to have coaches to help support our teachers, connect with this generation of students as much as possible, especially with your newer teachers in this environment, and it would be a real commitment to our MTSS process, a multi-tiered system of support, and its growth in our schools to support our teachers as well. So this is one of the things we've looked at. A lot of data out there, research, which, which I'll share with the group on instructional improvement to support teachers connecting to all kids, it can have a huge impact on data, student data and growth and achievement, really helps teachers with data-driven decision-making and accountability and goal setting for, for teachers. So it's something we want to work with. Again, a lot of this is a support system, it's not an I gotcha, it's somebody that's going to work side by side with the teachers to try to improve tier one teaching and impact kids.
How many positions are you looking for, Mike?
We're looking, looking for three, to have one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one split between the elementaries. We already have, one of our interventionists at Chapey and one at Barton already does half intervention and half coaching, especially focusing on new teachers. But we'd really like to be able to have one person each building, would be ideal.
Right, and would they be OEA members?
They would be, they would be. So the formal evaluation, teacher evaluation state would still be done by the principals and assistant principals, so.
So I will say, this is a model that we've had in my building for 70 years now, and I've been there for so long, I have seen the tremendous impact that coaching can have. I think that we have identified through our data meetings here in Oxford that one of the needs is that tier one level instruction, to get new strategies, to get new techniques, and to have somebody available to, to do this coaching position. If you're not aware of how they work, I can tell you they are a tremendous benefit, and our data now shows that, our data definitely shows the viability of a position like this. I don't know if you have coaching where you are.
Well, we all kind of work as coaches with each other, we try to co-teach and push it on our faculty area, so we're an abnormal district, we do it out of the generosity of our hearts.
But it's like Mike said, it's a best practice.
It is.
In a lot of places.
Yeah, it is, and it's, would be extremely beneficial to bring that down, would be awesome for our folks that are really working hard. The next slide is just some, a lot of the research that's out there, it's, you know, it's one of the best practices across school districts across the country. So you can keep going, Matt, we won't bore everybody with that. So at Chapey, what we'd be looking to do, those are the ESR positions, we've talked about that. We really want to make sure, we have a reading specialist, a K classroom, that we're adding half an instructional coach is really what's new there. We talked about it earlier, that PE teacher to support SEL Tier Two allows us to have mindfulness, full-time teachers in both elementary schools, which again is a, is a best practice. Go ahead, Matt. Barton, we would be, again, they have the half of a PE teacher so that they can have a full-time mindfulness teacher, which they, we've already done this year. Hey, Leah, has had great results, and we'd be adding half an instructional coach there as well. Stop me at any point.
I'm just going to stop right now.
Sure.
Leah can settle.
Sure. Perfect.
This conversation, we want to make sure she's.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent here. We're all good.
How was your training?
How was the train ride? Awesome.
So I mean, it, Mike is just going over the proposed changes since our last budget meeting. We are currently on slide seventeen.
There's a paper copy there for you too.
Thank you.
Awesome. So the ESSER grant positions that we're ending was an ELA interventionist, the math interventionist. This budget would allow us to fill those positions and keep some of the good people we have. Also, we talked about a little bit about a reading teacher, the need of the middle school. That's been bandied around since last year's budget by school committee and adding an instructional coach to the middle school as well. We also have three new statements for student clubs and activities that Ms. Joseph presented to this, this body early in January and is still the same too. High school, dean of students is going to come out of the school choice revolving, which we enacted last year's school choice, so that, that account is in good shape. Again, trying to utilize all the funds we can. This budget would also have a bright room coordinator, bring that person back. She's done an outstanding job with her students at the high school, keeping them engaged, keeping them enrolled, getting the supports that they need. It would also allow for an instructional coach to be at the high school at present as well. District-wide, we had talked about with the town manager at different times and our new police chief about having a full-time school resource officer for the district. This budget would allow for thirty thousand dollars to come from the general budget and ten thousand dollars from Title Four funds. And speaking with folks, eighty thousand dollar salary is probably the high end for an SRO, but we wanted to make sure we had enough funds to cover it. That is something we would love to see happen. We've talked about it for two years since I've been here. This also includes things that were previously in the, in the budget, general funds, special ed, legal services, we know have been on the rise for the past few years. Curriculum supplies and materials. We don't have a curriculum supplies material budget at all, which is very unusual for a school district to not have anything. And then the SABIS math curriculum that we spoke about a little bit earlier tonight. Leah, please stop me at any time if you have any questions. Do you have a question?
Once you're finished with the.
Okay. All right. All right. District-wide, we're good, Matt. Information technology. So we met with Katie back in January as well. Again, the ESSER position that was coming to an end is the technology integration specialist. We really want to keep that. He is really impacting, helping assist teachers across the district and doing some coaching at the middle school as well. With our new teachers there, it's been terrific. This also allows for kindergarten Chromebooks, some extra Chromebook support and the tech integration that we said we wanted to keep funded for ESSER. Works for Katie. Special ed and student services. We talked previously as well about the summer school needs for our special education staff. They did an amazing job last year. We were able to retain our own employees who know the kids and know the families, which is really, really valuable for our special ed folks. We saw that, that last summer was probably the best summer we've had for special ed. It was awesome, the stuff they did for our kids. And then additional tuition funding to help cover our out-of-district expenditures for next year as well as also, Matt, do you want to talk about the tuition?
Yeah. So I'm going to get into why I think this is so important, this additional tuition funding. So this is our projected and proposed with our special ed cost is going to be next year. So you can see, like, right now it's seven oh six, and this was like the original, so it could be actually in a eight oh six, and then hopefully Circuit Breaker would be going down in IDA. So we're projected to be about two point six million in special ed tuition out of students next year. And then again, like, with additional students, I, the only reason I have this slide up here is because you can really see how expensive these schools are, you know. Three, three student, three students costing four hundred and fourteen thousand. So, you know, if we have a couple extra students come in, we could be looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So again, looking back here, the biggest way that, you know, our special ed tuitions are paid for is through Circuit Breaker. So I sort of go through the Circuit Breaker fund balance. So starting this school year, we had a balance of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand in Circuit Breaker. The tuition costs are going to be paid out of Circuit Breaker. In this current school year, FY twenty-four is one point two billion. Our revenue this year for Circuit Breaker coming in is nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So this year, we're negative for Circuit Breaker. So we're going to be ending the year at about seven hundred thousand in Circuit Breaker. So we'll think about how this works next year. We're going to be starting off the year with seven hundred thousand. The tuition cost that I showed you a few slides ago for Circuit Breaker is going to be one point five million. I'm anticipating we're going to bring in one point one with that whole netting home. We'll only really have three hundred thousand in Circuit Breaker after next school year. That's alarming again, like I said, because if we have three students come in that are above and beyond what we thought, our Circuit Breaker is going to be like that.
And just to clarify that one second, Dave. You say three students come in. We could have move-ins of students who require out-of-district placements. We could also have students currently in our schools end up requiring.
Exactly. When I said the conditional students, I meant however it is, we have three additional replacements.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Exactly.
This is something that could be out of our control. We could have a student here.
It's completely out of our control.
But we could have students that just move in and get unhooked for that. Go ahead, Dave.
And just so, because I know this is being recorded, just so people are clear, whoever watches this, is in FY twenty-four, the out-of-district tuition rates went up fourteen or something.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a huge, huge increase. So that's why I'm sure those numbers, I don't think we budgeted.
That's a big piece of that. We did last year and then.
And then this year it's about five.
Yeah, four, four, four point six. Yeah, four point six or something like that.
So that was a huge increase.
Yeah.
In this, why those numbers are.
Much higher. Yeah.
Basic question. What's the so what on that? What happens if we, you know, need more than what we have here and we can't meet it? Is there counties? What, is it, yeah, is that what happens?
You have to appropriate money from.
It's got to come from somewhere else, somewhere else, yeah.
Positions.
Well, I mean, we also have.
Yeah, we, we have, we do have another reserve account that has a hundred in it for special ed. We'd be able to hit up like the East account that has two hundred and fifty in it.
And that's why we did our special sped revolving account with Senator Fatman and our old town manager. We did that so if there's like an extraordinary need, we could go and work in hand with our, you know, borders left and to appropriate money out of that account. But one thing that would have been a best practice of this school committee for years would have been to take any extra money. Sometimes at the end of the year, there is extra money that, that's supposed to be allocated back to the schools, and it should have been, been appropriated to that special ed reserve account for circumstances like this. I guess the one thing that is making me a little bit queasy in my stomach is we were so good about never spending more than we had to out of this. And I guess I'm kind of confused how this, how we got into this cycle where we had to be pulling so much from Circuit Breaker. Because we used to work very hard, so we had kind of like a year reserve, so we never put ourselves in financial jeopardy. And then we got away from that best, best practice.
Like, I think, like, the way that would have happened was the general fund should be paying, say, I don't know, three, like nine hundred thousand and Circuit Breaker nine hundred thousand. So it just, this is what our general fund budget was, six hundred and thirty-four. So really, the budgeted tuitions for a general fund should have been like nine hundred, just wrong numbers. So that would have brought that down to nine, nine something, which is what we brought in. So we're going to stay out, stay.
So we budgeted, part of our general fund in the past was to budget for special ed and not necessarily take from the Circuit Breaker. So we had that cushion. God forbid we didn't get the money back from the state. But now, because, I don't know, maybe we wanted to come on, under a certain percentage to please people in the town, wherever they may be, right? We actually created now a bigger financial cliff for ourselves, got a potential problem that could result in, in blowing up our budget. And, and we've created financial instability for our schools because we didn't budget appropriately because we were trying to, to play games where we got a certain percentage, right? And that's part of the problem. So we worked so hard to prevent this from happening, and then we just undid it in, in about a year and a half.
I would respectfully disagree with that.
How so?
Because there was prior administration here that was decimating Circuit Breaker. They were, they were using Circuit Breaker just to break even. That's not.
Right. Well, then when Dr. Nash came, we did the opposite and we built it. And then we just undone it.
I, I don't see, how is it undone?
Because we weren't investing in the general.
About fourteen thou, uh, fourteen percent, right?
I get that. I get that. But even that.
That's a huge increase.
It is a huge increase, but fourteen percent still being an increase. We know that there was going to be some increase. Maybe we didn't necessarily know that it would be fourteen. But again, this is where we need to be prudent and we need to, like, this budget, like you were saying, we need to advocate that we're putting more for that in that general fund.
Right.
So we're not pulling from our.
So are you, so are you saying that other districts basically fund a hundred percent of their out-of-district tuitions through the general fund?
I wouldn't say a hundred percent, but I would say that, and again, it was a best practice here, that we tried to have that reserve approximately a year or so of Circuit Breaker funds. So we never got it, because we don't know what the, what the state's, we don't know what's going to be reimbursed.
The whole idea of Circuit Breaker is to not use that money to, yeah, right? Put it in reserve.
But we have that.
So we're fine for every year. The concern is two years.
Not every district has, like, like you said.
And you have no indications as to what it will look like.
No, it's, it's from twenty-three out of district to thirty. So, you know, you don't, you just don't know. And it's, it's, since the pandemic, it's pretty typical in school systems that it's on, it's increasing, it's not decreasing.
Yeah, this, this two point six million accident came, came from special ed. So.
Right. And I, and, you know, in all, to be very fair, we have a brand-new special ed director in the past few years who probably didn't have the experience to really know, you know, what they might have had to.
Now, she knows.
She knows.
She knows. It takes a long time. She knows. I don't want to get into stat.
Okay.
Okay, that's, you're making an assumption.
Okay. So I guess that's a, I guess that's a big.
Let's stick to the numbers.
Well, I think to your point, I think we could have a look back at past budgets to see if that was accurate, that we were budgeting.
We were.
What you're saying is we were budgeting it almost enough to cover all our out-of-district placements in the general fund.
And we were doing it also with trying to pay, right? So we would, at the end of the year, we would take whatever, we would prepay. So we were creating an ability here to get a lower rate. So if you prepaid, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these institutions would say, okay, you don't have to necessarily pay fourteen percent. We're going to give you a deal because you're giving us money earlier.
Nobody's doing that.
You don't, you don't get a deal on it. Nobody's doing that.
And we probably, we, we, last couple of years, we've appropriated money to prepay tuitions for the fall.
We did that.
Yes.
Done that the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm hoping that we can do it in.
But that's a best practice. But if we run out of money.
Eighty or something like that?
We won't be able to do that.
We won't know until June if we can do that.
Exactly. Exactly. But these are the best practices, so having that cushion in Circuit Breaker and not spending, you know, a year, you know, obviously the year that we shouldn't be spending it. Because again, we just don't know what the state's going to give us back. So if they give us less back next year, you know, we could be in a little bit more difficulty. And I know you said you think Title One is going to go down, but you didn't allude to why is our Title One.
I, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
It's due to the, the census. And it's based upon the census by the, by the federal government. They don't allow the town, even though Dassie has in their computer system every day who's in our school.
Right.
The Title One grant, federal grant refuses to acknowledge that. So it's based upon the census. So our census according to the Title One is probably, I don't have the exact number in front of me, it's like nine hundred students, but we have fifteen hundred. So Title One has decreased for multiple years here. We're assuming it's going to go down a little bit again, which means that would be probably half a position somewhere. So we'd have to figure that out. But we won't know that till August. They don't tell us that till August.
I guess I'm confused because we used to be, all of our schools qualified for Title One at one point. Did they not?
The high school doesn't. High school does not.
Okay.
High school does not.
And the qualifications on Title One changed two, seven?
Couple of years ago. Yeah.
Do you know how they changed?
So, so middle school, Barton, Chafee qualified.
I remember it happened, I couldn't.
But they're, they're cutting the amount we're getting from Title One.
For years, we used to be Title One schools. Then we finally qualified as a district because we were almost fifty percent.
Yeah.
High ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know where.
I think we're still, that's why I think we got some of the extra money from the state was because of the high needs population.
It was, it was a combination of enrollment going up plus.
High needs.
High needs and ELL two, like this, stuff like that goes into it, which were one of the high needs.
So I'm just, I, it's just weird to hear that the Title One thinking is going to, for some reason, and I know you said it's because of the census.
That's what we were told. Yeah. So even though, even though we know there's fifteen hundred kids in our schools, you know what I mean? It's one of those strange things, but that's okay. It's based on the census.
Could you just go back, Matt, and then describe the one oh two, five, five, five? Is that what you, you guys are saying to put into the special education?
Yeah. So what, so, and I actually did not date this summer. So if we put that one oh two in, the general fund would be eight oh eight, and this would be one four oh two, roughly. So we would have an extra, and that would give us an extra, that would give us an extra. So then Circuit Breaker at the end of next school year would be four hundred.
Oh, yeah.
So it would just be, you know, adding, general fund would be eight oh eight. For me, the circuit, especially to a Circuit Breaker, can carry over from yet here, so it's good to have it in there as a reserve.
And that's why we always have, had that best practice.
Yeah.
Because one year we got hit and we lost in this district, I think it was eight hundred thousand dollars. And I do believe it was related to special education and Circuit Breaker money and things like that historically, grants. I can't remember the exact details, and that's when we took a page out of like best practices, let's never have that happen to us again. Because we had a rift, a ridiculous amount of teachers, I think Dave remembers. It was a horrible thing to live through. And now, again, I'm getting queasy because I feel like, God forbid, we could be putting ourselves in that big financial fluke again. Especially if grants don't come back what we think that they should and all sorts of extenuating circumstances. We've kind of built a little bit of a hole for ourselves.
I mean, I do think circuit breaker, I mean, I think that's, you know, I don't think we have to worry next year that the state's not going to give us the money again. It's pretty consistent. I think, I think we're going to see about, probably about the one point one, it's not an estimate, but I think that's probably.
But I guess how do we build that, that fund balance? Because we're really now behind a whole year, more than a year. So what do we do to fix that?
It's going to be difficult if the trend continues with, you know, the number of students increasing. Really, we need to get that we have, we go from thirty to twenty-five, and then just less of the tuition costs. I, I think.
Fewer out of district placements.
Yeah, I mean, that and.
It's hard to control.
I was going to say, we could assess this. And then over the next few years, if we could, if we could say, you know, try to put in, so next year if we could do this, we have eight oh eight in general fund, and then the next year we could try to do nine oh eight in general fund. You know, maybe like try to increase it so that the tuition's increases, so that we get to a level, because with circuit breaking, you do have to spend.
A certain percentage.
You had, so, like next.
Spend somewhere, you can't just sit on.
Absolutely.
So we started with nine seventy, we, so like this year, this year we started with nine seventy-six, we had to spend nine seventy-six this year, basically, in simplest terms, like you're going to spend what you received the previous year.
Correct.
So if we can get it to a point that we're spending that, whatever our threshold is in circuit breaker and then carryover the entire amount for the next share, that would be good, but it would be.
And that's what we did years prior. So again, I just, I guess that's the big thing, I want us as a committee to advocate that we create that and put that back, because that is the stopgap, that's like from potentially a tremendous, a tremendous amount of teachers.
So just to be clear, our options then would be to take that money from somewhere else and put it here, or to increase the debt.
Right.
Right, just to make it simple.
Yeah.
If, if that's what we wanted to do, our only options are, we take that money from somewhere else and put it here, and something else has to be withdrawn.
Correct.
Or we have to increase it.
And I guess, the one thing that concerns me is, what's going to prevent those out of district placements? It's the positions that we're advocating for right now.
Correct, so we can hold on all our students, catch twenty-two.
So like, I, I guess, what I would believe.
You're looking at me.
She may be looking at me.
No, 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 because my head's just gone a million miles a minute about this, because.
Yeah.
Right, I know you're talking about trying to keep, but you cannot control certain.
No can.
Just, you know, out placements, which, you know, and so I'm just trying to understand, like.
So what a lot of places will do is build programs like the Bright program.
Yeah.
Right, where we can hold on to those students.
Right.
So it's much cheaper for us to staff a Bright program.
That's right, that's what I was going to ask, because I.
It's a program at the high school.
Yeah.
Um, that helps students who are, some of them are having some mental health concerns, medical concerns, it's a wide variety.
Is there, is it an acronym though?
It is, it's a bridge, work line, work line resilient youth transition program, something like that.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to.
Should have written that down somewhere, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, in real simple terms, if you have a kid, this is the simplest of terms, if a kid gets a concussion playing basketball, that student's going to have trouble for a while, they might have headaches, they might have trouble transitioning back to the classroom.
Correct.
So the student can come into the Bright program for a whole day or part of a day, and then go out to one class and see how they feel. Uh, students in this program, some of them have medical conditions, um, and so they can get, every child in Bright has the opportunity to meet with a counselor every day, one-on-one or in small group, so they really get some extra support so that their transition back to high school is successful. There's, there's a lot of different items, it's not in the middle school.
It used to be.
It used to be, for my first year here, it was in the middle school as well.
And also they can get academic support, so.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Not just as counseling, but there could be somebody that would sit with them and help them do their schoolwork or whatever.
Our Bright coordinator does an amazing job, so she works as a liaison for the child and communicates with the counselors and the teachers to see what the student has to do and make sure the student's progressing. And so a student might come back and go to just math first, and then go to math and English, and then go to math, English, you know what I mean? And there's a place that if they're having a bad day, they can go check in with our Bright coordinator and have a talk with her and get, you know, regulated and go back to class or get some counseling, whatever they need. So it's really a terrific program to keep kids in school. It was very powerful where I came from, so I was a big fan, I brought it to Oxford.
It's a better district.
Yeah, it's awesome, it keeps kids on track for graduation, it's pretty awesome, so.
So I guess what I was trying to articulate, like, and I don't know if I'm making sense here, if we get rid of all these things we're advocating for, which are best practices, right? Then our kids might not get the services they need, they might not be able to progress, and then we have a higher probability or percentage of, of kids needing out of district placement, because we're not meeting their needs. So therefore I'm saying, I don't think it would be in our best interest to cut any of the things that we know we really need. But yes, it is in our best interest to still advocate for more funds going here, because otherwise, this could be what had happened to us in the past, where we have that big, huge, you know, like literally, I remember the phone call in July, I was on the beach with my family, and I heard we're short eight hundred thousand. And I was told, as a very new school committee member that didn't know much at all, I have to rift, rift all these teachers because I need to take it from somewhere, and I don't want to ever live through that again. So I, I'm advocating that we put more money there, which means that it's going to come from somewhere, not necessarily our budget.
So I think that's one of those things that the purpose of this meeting is to hear that, we're going to sit on that for the meeting. Sorry, I missed my speech, I'm getting the screen.
He feel bad, okay?
Um, that we'll be looking to have a bigger discussion and a vote on Monday for the break list. But that's one of the things for us to, to think about during this meeting. Can I ask a question back on slide twelve? It's the positions. Um, so to be clear, because one of the things we hear about when we add positions, right, is that there is an indirect cost.
Yep.
Of adding those positions that the town has taken. When I look at this list, the tech integrationist, the O M S interventionist, the Bright room teacher, those are not added, those are positions we're looking to keep.
Correct, so we don't have to cut those costs.
So it would not be new expenses.
So you're basically saying that's not a new indirect cost, because those people already work there.
No, I would, I would have been by that, so, we'll just go there.
Yeah.
Those are going to be new because those are, yes, there are three positions, um, we reimburse the town for healthcare, so. So there is going to be an additional direct cost.
Because we reimbursed it through the grant cost. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so that's, this is what I.
Everything is reimbursed, so it's healthcare or whatever F T R, it's on the sense that maybe.
So then the three instructional coaches and the reading teacher.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I just ask a clarification to you? The tech integrationist, I know is an important position. It's a pretty decent salary, and then when you're taking the instructional coaches and dividing that by three, like I guess, what is, what is, what is your thought or your vision on what's the difference between those positions?
Um, the tech integrationist was the position that was created through our S R discussions on how to use our grants. The school, you guys felt very strongly.
Yeah, no, I agree.
To assist teachers with technology.
What do you feel is the impact of those two different positions?
Uh, I think, I think the tech integrationist works district-wide to assist teachers with the use of technology, to help students. The person is also doing some coaching, so it does a little bit of both. The, the coaches would really work on a daily basis in the classrooms with the teachers, full-time, and be designated to a school or a certain number of grades or a certain number of rooms. If I answered your question.
Yeah, no, you did, I, I guess I'm just looking at it from an equity issue and how people would look at that and say, well, the tech integration is making eighty-two, but I'm an instructional coach making sixty-five.
Right, so it depends, David, if, if we hired one of our own teachers, classroom teachers who became a coach, let's say, right? I'm making, I'm making this up, at Bart, I'm making this up, and that person's getting eighty-two thousand dollars, then we would look, we always look to be fiscally responsible and try to fill our grade or subject teachers at the high school with newer teachers, so we can afford to keep those folks.
Right.
So we're just.
Is the possibility those instructional coaches could shrink to two?
That is a possibility.
Which it seems more.
Yeah, no, that's correct.
More likely, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I want to keep going.
I want to wait until Cory comes back.
We can wait, we can pause.
No, I mean, the meeting's still going, do you have anything?
I do, I just don't want Cory on.
Well, I'm the, it's just on the vice chair, we can keep going.
So twenty-six.
I just don't want to leave them.
So, there's really, there's really not much that's going to be questioned, so this, this is the total general budget, um, you know, with a three point oh percent increase for the town, um, you can see the seven point seven percent increase.
That's it, I laid out once.
Yeah, it's all just a big summary.
And then we already kind of hit the indirect cost pages that folks asked to have in there, so we're after that, we can talk about whatever you want to talk about. Answer any questions.
Through the chair, through the chair, while on this page, we were at three point eight, right, is that the request we had? So what's the difference, what's the, I know it's point eight, but what's the month, the dollar difference that we had asked the town for, and now we're taking that off?
I think we initially.
There was a seven, seven hundred.
Asked for, yeah, asked for a town share of nine point six million, five point two percent increase from the town without indirect costs, and now we're asking for three percent in this proposal at nine point four million total for indirect costs, ballpark.
So it's nine six and nine four?
Yep.
So it's about two hundred thousand difference?
Yep. Right, Matt, isn't that right? It's not right, I don't have the exact.
So what do you say, for the town share?
Yeah, so when we.
From the original.
Oh, our town share.
Yeah, our original town share, we, we were asking for three point eight percent increase, which was going to be, what was that dollar?
For town share.
Oh, um.
Because chapter seventy was projected so well.
Compared to now, what we're asking.
If you don't have it, can we have that number from Monday?
No, I don't have it, oh, second, I, I have it here. So originally we were asking nine point one million, and now, um.
It's on two different slides.
Yeah.
Slide nine has the original.
Yeah, the nine point one, nine point one million.
Has the new.
Yeah, that's, that's just current years. Yeah, and now it's nine point four, so it's about three hundred thousand. Nine point, no, it's nine, it was nine point six, um, originally, and now we're asking for nine point four, so it's a decrease of like two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And have we heard back from the town manager since our last meeting?
Uh, so I did have a conversation with the town manager today, um, she said, the answer that I got from the last time is, is pretty much the same, is the one big ticket item she has not got her answer from on yet is the, help me mic, the health insurance.
Health insurance.
Um, share or costs.
Yeah.
So she said, she still feels like she can't give us the solid number until she has that number. I told her that we have a meeting coming next Monday, and she said that she would talk to me Friday or over the weekend to make sure we had a number from her. She expects to get that answer this week.
Is she anticipating a drastic change in that number, or is it fairly consistent? I mean, we should have an idea what the percentage increase would be, and I can't imagine people going to surprise municipalities with a, a major change, so I'm sure we budgeted for.
I can't answer what she's anticipating, I don't, I don't know that, just nothing. That was the reason that we don't have a number yet from her, but she knows we have a meeting on Monday, and she wants us to have that information by then.
And to, to Pal's point of earlier, two hundred thousand dollars. If it's three point eight, move that money to.
Cuts half of our special ed deficit, cuts it almost in half, if we did that.
I guess I would advocate for more too, because I, right now the state is saying that unrestricted government aid, we're supposed to be getting about two million five hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars. Again, in the past, we used to get a portion of that other money. And we have some significant needs here, where we need to kind of set up this district to actually perform, and our students to actually make some strides here academically, and we know that we're having problems as far as our kids meeting the projected target that we would like to see them for performance on M C A S, for all of these other assessments we're doing, for, you know, gathering data. And the reason why is it really comes down to resources in the classroom, and we have some class sizes that are very large. We've got those bubbles here and there, and, I mean, I've, I've said this to Mike over and over again, I would really like to help classes, there's particular classes that have twenty-six, twenty-seven kids. We did it during COVID, we realized the impact of those lower numbers, it totally reduced our out of district, well, our special ed services, I would imagine, because our kids didn't necessarily have, they were getting the support in the classroom. These really big class sizes are really hard for our teachers, and it's not like having a class size of twenty-six or twenty-five in the past, when everybody sat in the row and they were nice and quiet, they didn't necessarily have problems. Like now our kids have significant needs. And so if we think, you know, and this doesn't even encompass that, but I would really like us to have another aid in the class size that's super large like that, if we can't have a teacher. You know, we did that for our kindergarten classes, because we knew our kids had such significant needs in that, that grade level. And this might be for our special ed director to think about it, she might know particular pockets in particular grades where, based on the data that we've been gathering, right, throughout the year, certain kids need more interventions, maybe we could build an opportunity where those students get more interventions and learn more, tiered instruction. I think we need to think about things like that, I think we need to say, we need a little bit more of that money, and the other money is, it's a pot money that is created for education in particular, that was the original intent. Those are all that lottery money, if you don't know what unrestricted government aid was, it was the receipts from.
And do you still, you have a number of what we're getting now?
Um, this year it's projected that the town is supposed to get two million five hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars.
But do you have a number as to what the town is currently giving us out of that?
Giving us out of that, I have no clue whether, necessarily giving us out of that.
What, education is, I would imagine that's, that's like, is that going to a revolving fund, or is it just going to the general fund? I would imagine it's the general fund, right?
I think it goes to the general fund, but I don't honestly know, I know it goes and it can be used by any department, I believe, but the original intent for that was to be used for education, and then over the years, this district has got away from taking that and putting it on top of like our net school spending. But that's how all districts do give more above and beyond that foundation budget. They use that unrestricted government aid and they say, okay, I'm going to allocate this to the schools.
So if that unrestricted government aid, I would imagine it's to be used in the year that it's received, so that probably going to the general funds without me.
I can't tell you exactly, hold on a second, or I don't think I can access it.
I think unless I reach out to Justin and ask him if he has a number on that.
That is the number that I've gone off.
Well, that's the number that the town gets, but that's not the number that we know we're getting as a school district.
Correct, that's the number that is projected for local aid distribution that I just looked up today. And then there was also this thing here, and this is one question that I had, it says, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education shall not consider healthcare costs for retired teachers to be part of net school spending for any district in which such costs were not considered part of net school spending in fiscal year nineteen ninety-four, and for any district that has not accepted the provisions of section two sixty of chapter one sixty-five of the Acts of two thousand fourteen. Provided that any district for which such costs are not so considered, shall have included as part of the net school spending an amount equal to the increase in the foundation budget for the district associated with healthcare costs for retired teachers. Like, I don't know, but back in the day, we included retired teachers as part of our net school spending, and if we didn't, I believe that they should not, like, the town wouldn't even be allowed to assess that and count that against our, like, towards our net school spending. And I guess I would have to do some more to dig back to see if that was a, if that was something we did back in two thousand fourteen, but if we didn't, and the town is counting that towards our net school spending requirements above and beyond, I don't think that they had.
Who calculates that, net school spending is the town or is the state? Doesn't the state calculate what they're supposed to?
Well, because you're, well, the net school spending is a report that I, I do, I mean, there's a line on their retired employee insurance, and I just put whatever the retired employee insurance is. I get, and I guess if it wasn't, it shouldn't be included, the state would just, the state would be the one to say that it shouldn't be. I would think.
It's so long ago, two thousand fourteen, I don't know who keeps an eye on these things.
Uh, have any other questions, thoughts, comments on this before we adjourn and prepare ourselves for Monday? So I, I will say that I am going to reach out and ask, um, if Justin can share with us how much of the unrestricted government aid the school department does get, and also if they have a placeholder for what indirect costs are per new employee, if that's important for us to know too, given our ask.
I also think we need to probably hear, kind of just see where we're at, because it sounds like we're at, we're going to go down, at least the recommendations brought to us tonight is three point oh.
Well, again, we're going to have a conversation Monday.
I know.
We're going to say, we want to go up, we want to go down, we want to, I want to do that tonight, because.
Well, I mean, I think we're here, we should at least vet everything out, at least if anyone has any, I, I'm, I'm just going to say, bow down for the three point eight, I, I think. Eliminating the two percent is two thousand, two hundred thousand.
Well, so, I just, I just did it, so if we added in two hundred thousand, um, that would actually bring the town share back up to five point six. Because the three point eight was our overall general fund budget increase, not just with the town, so right now we're at a town. Yeah, so that brings, so we added two twenty-five, and which would bring them back up to nine point six, that would have a town, um, percentage increase of five point five.
Five point five?
Yeah. Because the three point eight was.
For the town share, but not a five point five from our last question.
But the original three point eight was total budget, chapter seventy plus town share.
Yeah.
But that was with a two point three percent assumed increase for chapter seventy, and then a, what, what increase for the town, five point seven? Right?
Five point six, yeah.
Five point six.
So this was the back of the original answer.
Original five.
Five point six.
Yeah.
So.
If our job is, part of our job is to manage the financial risks in the schools, this special ed balance of two hundred ninety-six, eight sixty, makes me damn near next year projected, that's our biggest risk, right? And so if we had two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars extra to get back, and we said we're going to put it here, we still have risk, I don't, we're not, we're not out of the woods, but we've cut our risk in about half by doing that.
I agree, we need, we need that, we're, we're a couple of kids away, a couple of kids extra, this year we had seven extra kids get placed out. Right, seven, seven kids from the previous year get placed out, if we continue that trend, we're, we're going to be out of money in twenty twenty, at the end of twenty twenty-five.
And then in twenty twenty-six, we're going to like bring up, we have an all-year fourteen point four percent increase or something.
Well, I mean, it's not going to have a deck here, but for the following year.
Twenty twenty-six, or, yeah, we're in trouble, right? And we're, we're looking at potentially, what I heard, potentially cutting teachers.
Yeah, yuck.
Puts us in a, I, I don't know.
We lived through that.
Two hundred thousand dollars now to keep us a little bit healthier and then cut off some of the rest of the time and then make cuts to the, to the teaching staff down the road.
That's a no brainer, right?
See, well, it seems like something. Well, it seems like something we should take to the town.
Um, Matt, I don't know if you can speak to this. So, Chapter 78, we get that funds, and then the town's total required contribution. What is the town's required contribution to us for FY '25?
The minimum, you mean?
Yeah. The minimum.
Do you have it on the back of your proposal?
I mean, I have a chart, but I want to see what you're saying.
No, no, I'll tell you.
Please have what I see.
All right, so.
The minimum that they're, that they're required to give us. And this is based on municipal revenue growth factors and other things, and our district has grown financially over the last year. There's a big formula that I researched as far as they look at 2022 evaluations, uniform property percentage, local effort for property.
11.6 million, 11.652 million?
So the fired contribution?
Yeah.
That includes indirect costs?
That includes indirect, yeah.
So.
So without indirect, any idea what that is?
You, you can't really do that, because some of the indirect costs are coming on the Chapter 70, right? So it's, to really say what.
So I see for FY '25, and again, I took this off of the state, and I shared this with Cory as chair, the required local contribution was $13,154,621.
I believe that number is including, um, um, the 1.8 million for Baypad.
Okay. I don't know. And then, so I also saw that there's things about, like, shortfalls from targeted for local shares, right? So if the town didn't necessarily give us the appropriate appropriation, the state kind of helps us make up for it, I guess, the following year. And so I don't know if you have those figures, because it looked like we were supposed to get, you know, preliminary contributions above the targeted share, a certain amount. If we're below a targeted share, then the state basically comes back and says, hey, Town of Oxford, you should have given this to your schools if you didn't. And we're going to make you give this to your schools. And I don't know, like, historically, if that, that type of revenue has ever come back to the schools.
No, so. The town, so the town, the town has been that, that's spending.
Hasn't those.
Yeah, that was the other chart here when I was good.
Yeah.
According to those charts, the town has net, net school.
Yeah, so, so.
The thing you shared right here that I was looking at, and I think one of us could make.
This is, so this is the end of the year report for the net school spending. So let's look at like FY '23. So our, um, this is like, this, the 17 million would be like our school side.
Our Chapter 70.
No, like, our school side operational expenses. So it's all our operational expenses minus, minus, minus transportation, which is, say, like, I don't know, 2 million or whatever.
Okay.
Um, and then we have the indirect cost, which is here, the 5.3. So our net school spending for FY '23 was 23.1 million. The required net school spending was 21.2. So we were actually over net school spending by like 1.9 million.
Or 9%.
Or 9%.
Which is, which is on slide 10, where we did net school spending.
So that's how they get, so like, so like this minus this, whatever, so that's, you know, 1.9 million is 9% of. Higher than, puts us at 271, yeah.
And like we talked about before, though, like, if we look at it, 20% of it, it's all those, those indirect type costs, healthcare, different types of assess, assess, like, it's not necessarily.
Healthcare's a huge chunk of it.
Yeah, it's not necessarily going to educating the student.
No, but like, like, money benefits and insurance and, well, the retired medical wouldn't really help, but like, just insurance and employee benefits right there is 3.4. I mean, that's kind of going towards the.
That's.
It's going to the, but I mean, that, like, that's, that's a cost of having a teacher here.
Right.
So it's an indirect cost, but it's a direct cost of having a teacher here for those expenses. And then like, there's even like tuition here, which would be like our charter schools and other, the tuitions.
Yeah, I do think it's, it's a little more convoluted to try and figure out exactly which pieces it goes to, but the, the bigger picture is we are still at the bottom of.
Yeah.
How much we are spending over net school spending.
Right.
Right? As a district, we are one of the lowest in how much we spend over the net school spending.
Correct.
That's the bigger picture point.
And I would love to get a pulse too on like our indirect cost. And I know you said it's, every town's different, every municipality's different, how they do that, but it feels like that, that percentage seems large to me. And maybe I'm wrong based, maybe it's not so large, but 20% of your, of, of how you're operating, right? Being taken and allocated that way, and, and I know it's, it's a cost to do in business, but it seems like the cost to do in business keeps going up. And we're not necessarily investing money towards the students, it's just more cost of like, what everything else is, you know, it's that inflation to things. That's hard, because we're not like necessarily giving more towards instruction. I don't know if I'm making any sense.
Yeah.
Anything else from the committee?
I would love to, again, look at, um, our municipal agreements.
I can share those with you on Monday night.
Yeah, I'd love to see like what they are.
They're pretty general, they're one-pagers, not a lot, not a lot of descriptions.
I think the last time I, I saw them, I remember it was like around 2020.
We conclude those in the package.
So one last question, transportation, do, do we, just fill me in again, did we go off the bid already?
Yeah, we went off the bid.
We only, how many?
This first student was the only one that bid.
Oh, I thought that was.
So that, and have we got an offer from them yet?
We had an offer. We had the opening, and I was going to present it to you guys on Friday.
Because we just had it in our district, only one provider came, and it's like a 12%.
It was, um, 8.6 the first year, and then, I think, 6 and 6, roughly that I.
So how are we, is that?
It's built in, so it's.
Oh, you already, okay.
Yeah, I built it in, um, it was, it's that top number of 37,000. I originally, I originally had in there like 3% of our open.
It's on slide 12, Dave.
Yes, that's the very top.
Additional transportation.
That 37,000 is the extra cost.
That we didn't know. We estimated it was going to be around a 3% increase, hoping, but it's, yeah.
We were, I told you 12 in our district, it's ridiculous.
And it's sad that, you know, only one company fits in these things, it's just.
I thought we had more.
We only had one bid out in Waukesha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to say, I gave like maybe 10, 10 packets out too, to potential bidders. We thought we'd get three or four.
They're probably all working together. You take this one, you take that one, the only provider.
I won't tell you that, I called them in the past for my own safety.
I'd also say, if, if during the week you, you come up with more questions and you want to run them through me, that I can pass them on to Mike or Matt.
Yep.
So when we get back here next Monday, we are as informed as we can be, have a good discussion, and come up with a final boost.
I guess I would just love to know, like, what are the indirect costs for other town departments? What percentage is it? Is it 20%? Is it 5%? And we, and I know we are a much big pe, bigger piece of the pie. I guess that would make me feel more comfortable as far as advocating for some of that other money. Like, I, again, I feel like we need more to make a sound budget, so we don't get ourselves.
The problem with that is like, so when you're on the town side, there's really going to be no indirect cost for, like, say, the police department, because they're part of the town. So healthcare for the police department is a direct cost, because even though it's, how much you paid out of a different line, it's not directly out of the police budget, it's still a direct cost, because it's still on the town side. The time really of indirect is, is school departments, because there's all the school reporting, all the department has other reporting. That's really the only reason.
Correct, you're right.
So the comparison would make sense.
You really can't do it, because.
That makes sense what you're saying.
The town is, like, the police department is considered. So that'd be like saying, like, for us, like, JF school, you know, like, the central office might be thinking it's something that's JF, but it's a direct cost, because, you know, it's part of the same department.
Yeah, you make perfect sense now that I think about it.
Just one last, I know we talked about hold harmless earlier, just so that, like, I want to make sure I'm clear about this, because it's happening in our district, but you're not, it means you're not eligible for an increase in Chapter 78, um, that, that year, right? And you're only receiving $30 per kid.
Right.
That's what it is. So it doesn't mean you're getting the same money you got.
Right.
You're getting zero, basically no increase.
Right.
So just so that's out there, I mean, that's happening to districts. If we go down next year, who knows what's going to happen?
Right.
So I think when we have the capacity to advocate for the things that have been missing in this district for a long time, I think we've got to jump on it.
Right, because that's what's going to entice people to stay in the district, to want to move to our community. It's having the services that our kids need, and if we're trying to lighten it and diamond, you know, people are going to say, I'm going to move somewhere else where, like, the sun, right? That they're, what was it?
Any more than 145%?
145%. They're clearly investing in their community, and we're just a few percentage points over the requirement, which is sad. And we're, and the perspective, again, what did you say? It was 100 out of 300, what's, more districts?
118 districts, 270.
So there's that many, 270 districts above us that are investing more in their schools' communities than us. I mean, that's right there. I don't know how clear we can make it to everybody in our community, 270 more districts think that education is worth investing more into than we do. I think that says it all. I mean, I know at this table, we feel like we got to invest more. I'm saying other people need to understand that.
In fairness, there's 50-something that are below us. So, I mean, I'm just playing both sides of it, and I think we know that we need to be fiscally responsible, because it's not just the school department, it's other departments. But we also feel like, at least I feel, our first, our ask, our first ask was very reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
And now that the state, based on a lot of our hard work and what we've done to improve, we're getting a little bit more than we anticipated, for me, I don't think that means we should cut what we initially wanted.
No.
We're getting a loss more than we initially.
Well, right, but I'm saying, it's well deserved and it's needed, and it's not like it's going to go to waste. So, yeah, you're right.
And that's because we have more students.
I agree, I agree with Dave. I'm sorry, even though you're trying to say it, I'm like, I'm right with you. Like, I don't feel like we should cut it down.
I think that's an important distinction to make, though, that the state has recognized.
A need.
The state has recognized the increasing, the increase in high-need students, and that's not just extra money, that is to meet a current need.
Right.
Anything else for tonight? Again, like I said, if during the week you have stuff, you want more information about, let me know. You have to pass it along.
You might not want to say that, Cory, I've been blowing up your phone already.
I don't think I needed to say it.
I'm sorry, I apologize that I was late.
Okay. I just have, Matt and I, so we, we prepared this presentation. Would you like us to give a very similar presentation with all of that information in it, or do you want us to shrink it down, or what? We'll do whatever the committee prefers for Monday's meeting, we'll do whatever you.
I like that presentation a lot. I'd also like us to put other things in, like, what are the additional revenues that our community has captured, right? Unrestricted government aid. I know these are one-time shots and arms, right, if we take these things, but like, we can, again, build up our circuit breaker in those revolving funds, which also helps the town, I think, with their loans and things like that. But if we show, you know, the town took in more money from different things, some things have changed. They're not taking in more money from the dispensary that's in the community.
And a lot of this information you're asking for is on the town side.
Right.
We're still waiting to hear from the town manager. Hopefully, we'll hear by Friday, choose a better idea.
She knows that extra revenue that's coming in.
Yep.
And clearly, the state sees that there's extra revenue coming in, and that's why they're assessing the town to be giving us actually a certain percentage for their required contribution. I just kind of think it would be nice to have a pulse on what things are, so we, you know, we can play nice and say, oh. But she's got to be forthcoming, I guess, or we just say, we clearly can see that the unrestricted government aid numbers, um.
Great, question, Chris, how much of that are we getting? I really have to ask a question. You have a motion? I'll make a motion for the chair. Second.
Second?
Second. No others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?